Louis, are we ready? Ready? Okay. Good evening and welcome to this evening's candidate forum presented by the Westlake North Olmsted Chapter of the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland. We're pleased to welcome all of you here with us tonight and also like to welcome those who are watching online via livestream and to anyone who is watching the recording which will be made available on our YouTube channel. I'm Nadia Zaim, co-chair of the Westlake North Olmsted Chapter. Thank you to the candidates for Westlake City Council who are here with us tonight. Thank you to the Westlake Porter Public Library for the use of this space and to all of our chapter volunteers who are staffing this event. And a special thank you to Louis Burrell and Wyndham Ratchford, who are our videographers tonight. Yes, thank you. In keeping with our longstanding forum tradition, questions for the candidates will be submitted in written form. Everyone should have received an index card as you entered this evening to write down your questions. When you have a question ready, raise your hand and a runner will come and pick up your card. You can also raise your hand if we need another card. We have two league members in the back who will be sorting the questions to avoid duplication, to provide a diversity of questions and to ensure clarity and appropriateness. As I stated earlier, we are recording this program for future viewing on YouTube and I want to let you know that personal recording during this program is forbidden by our policies. You are invited to view and share the forum in its entirety on YouTube, but we also have a prohibition on sharing segments of the forum on social media. Finally, we ask your cooperation in avoiding expressions of support or opposition to any candidate during tonight's program. Please remember the purpose of this evening is to hear from the candidates so that each resident can make an informed decision regarding their vote and any vocal interruptions takes time away from the candidates. Now I will introduce Pam Smith. We are fortunate to have Ms. Smith as our moderator tonight. She comes to us from the Lakewood Chapter where she has been a longtime member. Ms. Smith served three four-year terms on Lakewood City Council and continues to volunteer in many Lakewood civic organizations. Sorry about that. Ms. Smith is retired from her marketing manager job with Steem Master Carpet and she also enjoys moderating candidate forums and recommends them as the best way to learn about candidates. Let's welcome Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Nadia. It's a pleasure for me to be here. This is an exciting candidate tonight because you have opposed elections in three of your wards and you'll hear from them separately so that you can know these candidates and ask them relevant questions. The procedure for tonight is that each candidate will first give a two-minute presentation and then we will go into questions and answers. And the questions and answers will be about 20 minutes long. We worked out a timeline and then each candidate will have two minutes to close. We'll then shift gears, move Ward Four off and move Ward Three candidates on and do the same procedure. With that, I think we should get started. Our candidate, our two candidates are Mr. Walter, Mr. Michael Lamb and Todd Leveque. We will start the two-minute presentation with Mr. Lamb.
Good evening and thank you all for being here. My name is Michael Lamb and my wife Elaine and I have called Westlake our home for the past 23 years. Both of our daughters Rebecca and Jackie went to Westlake schools and both graduated from Westlake schools. I'm proud to call Westlake my home. We moved here originally because of the reputation of the schools and the reputation of the city services, but after we moved here I discovered that there was a lot more to Westlake than just that. Westlake was a well-run, strong, well-managed and open community, which I really enjoy. Like many of you tonight, I've worked hard to build a life for my family in Westlake, both as a police officer and as a small business owner. Those experiences give me the ability to understand the challenges that both families as well as businesses have on a day-to-day basis. Just as important, we must keep our taxes extremely low because that's what makes Westlake the place where people and businesses want to move to. Right now, the city services are above reproached. Our roads are perfect. The infrastructure is well in some places. It needs to be improved in others, but I look forward to building a better life for everybody here. Westlake is already a wonderful city and I believe our continued success depends on clear priorities, safe neighborhoods and strong reliable city services. What I want to do though is I want to really work and listen to what everybody has to say here because you will hear my vision and I want to take your vision with me also because together my campaign with us can make a strong and successful Westlake into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two timers working together in the front row here with placards so each candidate knows how to time their presentation. The next presentation will be Todd Leveque running also here in Ward Four.
Good evening. My name is Todd Leveque. And my, here we go. And I'm honored to be here today. My wife and I have been proud to call Westlake home for many years. This is a wonderful place to raise a family, to start a business and to enjoy the high quality of life that comes with good leadership and strong community values. My path to public service began in the United States Navy where I learned the core values of honor, courage and commitment. Those values have guided me throughout my life as a sailor, as a coach and a teacher and as a volunteer baseball coach here in the city of Westlake and in the community. They taught me to listen, to take responsibility and to put service above self. Those same values align directly with the mission of the city of Westlake, which is to enhance the quality of life for all residents by providing the highest level of services in an efficient and cost-effective manner. I'm running for city council because I want to carry those principles into action. For Ward Four, that means supporting thoughtful development that respects the community character, making Westlake more connected with safe sidewalks and bike lanes and investing in parks and safety services so our residents continue to thrive. It means supporting our seniors with programs that get them connected with the community and offering opportunities for our youth to develop mentorships and leadership opportunities in the community. Westlake is already a great community and I want to be part of something great, working every day to listen to my neighbors, solve problems and keep the city moving forward.
Thank you very much. We'll now begin the questions and answers. Do we have questions from the table yet? I have some here and let me start with these questions. We're going to start with Mr. Lamb. One minute and we can ask more questions if you answer in less than one minute, but that's your choice. Mr. Lamb, how would you balance the interests of Ward Four with the broader needs of the community?
The interests of Ward Four and the broader community all kind of piece together. Whatever is good for Ward Four, building up the business base and making the area safe for the residents, that kind of affects everybody throughout the city. And the way you do that, and that's kind of my forte as a police, as a former police officer, it's making sure that the police department is out handling quality of life issues. If they're doing that, then the residents feel safe and secure. And from dealing in the cities that I dealt with, because I dealt with the citizens of the city of Cleveland to the citizens of Shaker Heights, and you find out that people in both areas want the same thing and that's to feel safe and secure in their home. And also with Ward Four, which really benefits the city, is working to redevelop the Dover Center Ridge area because that way it increases the tax base in the city by having active businesses there working.
Thank you, Mr. Leveque.
Yeah, that, I would echo a lot of that sentiment. I've knocked on about a thousand doors in Ward Four since I started this campaign and during that time, a lot of questions come up from constituents about development and things that are going on outside of Ward Four. And as a councilman, I believe that it's my responsibility to not only serve the entire community, but to be aware of all of the issues that the other wards face. Because just like Westlake is part of Cuyahoga County, Ward Four is part of Westlake and if Ward Four is successful, we need all the wards to be successful. I looked as my, during my time as an athletic director and as a coach and in the Navy, I've worked with competing interests for resources. I understand how that works and I think though, if we sit down and look for the greatest good for the greatest number, we could be successful.
Thank you. Starting now with Mr. Leveque and again, since you mentioned going door-to-door to a thousand doors, that's an important part of campaigning for Ward Council people. Can you tell us some of the concerns that people have addressed to you?
Yes, I can. The number one concern that I hear from residents in Ward Four is about traffic speeding and safety in traffic, especially in the area of where I live around Bassett. Some may recall there was a road cut through there to go to the school and I thought the city did a great job of working with the residents to make sure that the traffic didn't get overwhelmed. And sometimes it aggravates me because I have to go to a soccer game and drive all the way around to see my kid play, but I understand why they do it. I think we have a lot of ways, innovative ways to slow down traffic. I don't know that a sign telling you how fast you're going is really, that's a good start, but we have, there's a lot of other things that we can do. So traffic safety and also noise abatement, there's a lot, and this goes beyond Ward Four. We have issues with people driving through the city blasting music and I taught young people for 27 years, so I know how that can be, but there are, there are ordinance that we can enforce and there are ways that we can make their lifestyle a little bit better. So those are my issues in Ward Four that I've heard about.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb, what have you heard from constituents in Ward Four?
Well, the first and foremost is like Todd said, it's the traffic. People are constantly complaining about the speeders, the loud mufflers that you hear, the bikes racing up and down Crocker, Dover and Bassett. And even when I was campaigning, I saw a car end up making the turn onto North Glenn and decided he wanted to back up and hit the rock that was at the corner there. It's all about quality of life policing that needs to happen. Also, some of the bigger complaints that I've heard about is the water and also the cellphone coverage. The cellphone coverage, unfortunately, the city can provide permits for that, but they can't force the cellphone companies to actually fix that problem, even though the mayor said in a meeting that he would waive the fee for the permitting fee for them to come in and actually do it. For the water, the city is in the process of codifying the cleaning out of the Dover ditch stream all the way to the end of the city so that way it makes it flow more freely and keeps the water down.
Thank you very much. Starting with Mr. Lamb, what's your stance regarding the use of herbicides such as Kemlin on city properties, parks?
For the weed control, it would be great if we could sit there and use something a little more natural because I happen to have a garden that I keep all the time at my house and I actually go up to the greenhouse at Dover and Canterbury and that guy's all about natural everything. He makes his own dirt, he makes his own fertilizer. It would be wonderful if we could use more natural items to take care of the problem, but I realize too that there's going to be some supplementing that would have to happen because the weed problem could get very prevalent very fast.
Thank you. Mr. Leveque?
So when it comes to pesticides and lawns and my, if I had my way, I would never have a lawn, but unfortunately here in America, lawns are a requirement that we all must keep. We have a geese issue, as you probably know too, and I, you might find the irony that we have a problem with geese, but we also keep feeding them their favorite food, which is Kentucky bluegrass. So the more that us humans try to meddle with nature and change things to make it the way we think it should be, the more problems we create. So my approach would be less is more when it comes to landscaping and let's try to keep things as nature and God intended.
Thank you. Mr. Leveque, this question is about spending. Our city is in the midst of spending more than a million dollars on creation and improvement of sports facilities. Are you familiar with these projects and what are your thoughts on the need for these facilities and the cost? Fifteen million.
Thank you. And I am, I am very familiar, but I don't think anybody wants me to rattle off a list of numbers and projects, but I know what's going on. So every morning I get up, when I can, I go work out and my favorite workout is to go run to the rec center and up the hill and down the hill and that's one mile from my door. And I've been unable to do that for the last month and I've been happy though because I know what's going on at the West, at the Westlake Rec. I've been a baseball coach for, I don't know, probably most of my life and an athletic director and I know what value the resources of fields are. I have friends already telling me, Todd, you got to get more baseball. I'm like, the baseball fields are coming, don't worry, we got it. But I think Westlake is a great place. I know that this year, 2025, the city went into the reserves a little bit, but Westlake has 22 months of reserves. We're not going to run out of money. The city has been managed very well and I'm very thrilled that we continue to invest in schools for our kids or fields and such.
Mr. Lamb?
One good thing about Westlake is having three accountants that are on, two of them on city council and one of them happens to be the mayor. They spend the city's money like an accountant would spend the money. They make sure that the money is available before they start spending it. The money for the fields was appropriated and it was shown by city survey that this was a need that the city wanted taken care of. It's very similar to what's going on up at the golf course. They're in the process of putting in the driving range there, which was another project that the city residents said very loudly that they would be interested in having that happen. So you have to look at our city council, they listen to the residents and they try to fill their needs as best as possible. Sometimes they don't do it as quick as residents think they should. That's because the city wants to take the money, make sure they have it in and they can spend it without having any surprise come along.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Lamb, how should council approach balancing economic growth, housing needs and environmental concerns as you plan for Westlake's future?
Environmental concerns I can speak really highly about because back in 2014 Dover ditch that runs behind my house that's generally dry, I had two and a half feet of it in my basement. What the city did though is they addressed that need, not for me, but for the residents by expanding the catch basins on the other side of Crocker, which has decreased the water level in my backyard. What the city does is every time a project is brought before planning commission or city council, it is studied to make sure that it meets the requirements of drainage throughout the city. They don't allow projects to happen unless these studies have been made. I've been at numerous city council meetings as well as planning commission meetings where this is discussed to protect the community, to protect their original neighbors, to make sure that they're not unduly harmed by what's going on.
Thank you. Mr. Leveque? Yes, sure. How should council approach balancing economic growth, housing needs and environmental concerns as you plan for the future?
So I would start off by saying that growth should enhance Westlake and it shouldn't take away from the character of who we are. I'm reminded of a recent incident, not an incident, but a situation in Ward Four. It was a zoning issue. Somebody sold a big parcel of land and it was going to be zoned for multifamily and it was going to cause a strain on the neighborhood and the people who live there. And I followed the situation, I know my opponent did as well, and through listening to the experts, listening to the community and listening to the developers, they were able to come up with a solution that did exactly what we needed. It increased our tax base by bringing in good quality housing, but it didn't put it over a strain on what we already have. Like we've been saying here, Westlake is a fantastic city and with the resources that we have, we have experts on our commissions and our boards and what they recommend to council, I will listen intently and I know that I'm going to learn a lot in this job and I don't claim to be an expert on environmental issues, but I know that we have the resources to bring in people who are and we're going to do that and continue to grow.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Leveque, what do you think is the number one infrastructure issue facing our city?
Number one? Well, a couple of things that I come to mind right away. Westlake, again, is a great place to live. Some of the things though, as we grow, we're finding that some of these intersections and some of these parts of our city are getting jammed up and bottlenecked. For example, if you've ever been to Sibling Revelry over there on Sperry and you tried to get back to the south side of Westlake, it's darn near impossible to get there, to go around. We have some streets that have, maybe they could use a cul-de-sac. We have bikes that we're having, we're still making bikes ride on the side of the road in some places and we don't, we have to move forward with modern solutions to some of these problems and that might include bump outs on the streets, maybe some raised crosswalks, but I think the number one issue I believe that we face is we need to be able to get around this city without being so dependent on our automobiles.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb, infrastructure?
For infrastructure, a lot of it has to do with traffic like my friend here is talking about. Part of what Westlake did is they installed computer systems to actually get the lights timed correctly. Those need to be reexamined to make sure that they're still working properly and are directing the flow of traffic according to the increases that have happened. Because one of the things with the Crocker Sterns extension is we saw the traffic increase substantially. Up to and including the traffic study that they originally did, they said that before all the development was done, they had already reached the maximum goal of traffic going through that area. So that's huge. And then the second follow-up with that would be also the water retention because Westlake doesn't do a really good job of controlling its water flow through the city. So we just got to make sure that the water can flow freely through Westlake and we don't have to worry about the flooding issue as much as we do now.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Lamb, if, this will be the last question before our closing since we're doing three different wards tonight. If you could change one thing in our zoning code, the zoning code for Westlake, what would it be and why?
It would be eliminating the ability for developers to put double houses in multiple, on multiple different small lots throughout the city. I don't believe that goes with the feel of the makeup of the city of Westlake. When you look at them, they're not the same quality of housing that you see throughout the rest of the city. That's huge. We need to keep Westlake's character the same way that it is, keep everything up to the standards that we are all used to as residents.
Thank you. Mr. Leveque?
Well, I hate to steal someone's answer, but when someone's got the right answer, I'm not afraid. So I agree 100% with what he said. We need to reconsider zoning for multifamily housing and that has been an issue in Ward Four. We need to make sure that Westlake retains its character, but not only that, we need to make sure that Westlake stays affordable for our seniors and our young families. And I've heard residents tell me that it's great that all these places are being built up around here, but I don't know anybody who can afford to move into it. I've heard that from residents. So we have, affordable housing is an issue in Westlake. This is a wonderful community. Yes, it is affordable, but we need to, taking a two-acre lot and turning it into eight town homes is probably not the best way for us to go forward. I think we need to maybe pump the brakes a little bit and take a breath and, because Westlake has, we don't want to make the mistake of trying to get too big.
Thank you. Well, that was a wide variety of questions. Thank you very much for your considered answers and we're now ready to go to the closing statements, starting with Mr. Leveque. Two minutes.
It's been a real pleasure to be with you tonight. As I mentioned earlier, my path to public service started in the United States Navy. When I came here tonight, I told my wife, I said, I don't belong there. What am I doing here? I'm just a kid from Sheffield Lake. 2000, in 1988, two years after Mayor Clough was elected, I met a girl in Westlake and I fell in love. I fell in love with her and I fell in love with this city. After I served my country, when we came back to Westlake, there was only one place that we would consider living. I didn't think we could ever live in Westlake. One day I was driving down North Glenn, I saw a for sale sign and I said, we got to go there, we're moving. So since 2001, we've raised three children in this community. I have a senior and a junior high at Westlake High School. I got to know all my neighbors. I live in a neighborhood where when the snow blower comes out, you keep blowing snow until you get to the next snow blower. People take care of each other. My biggest contribution I've gotten in this campaign, I'm proud to say, is from my next door neighbor, John. It's an honor just, I'm not going to come into Westlake with a lot of answers and a lot of change. I'm going to come into this job listening and learning and serving. I believe in servant leadership. That's how I was raised. When I was in the Navy, I was awarded Sailor of the Year in 2003 in the Reserve Center Cleveland, but I was more proud of the fact that the guy that worked underneath me got Junior Sailor of the Year and the guy that worked underneath him got Blue Jacket of the Year. As your city councilman, I understand that it's not about me, it's about you. So I ask for your consideration and I hope that I can earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
My campaign is not so much about politics as it is about people. It's actually going out and listening to what the residents of Ward Four are telling me their issues. I had ideas of what their issues were, but being on the campaign trail, you learn a heck of a lot more. People make it personal, they make it one-on-one and it's great because you can take those ideas and bring them to city council and make sure that their values are protected. Westlake is already a wonderful city and I believe our continued success depends on clear priorities, safe neighborhoods, strong schools, reliable city services and making sure taxpayer dollars are wisely spent. Hence why I said, we got to keep our taxes as low as possible because that's what keeps us here and more importantly, keeps the businesses and world headquarters in Westlake. I spent most of my life committed to service and to the community and it brings, and I want to bring that same dedication to city council. With your support, we can take on today's challenges and build an even stronger tomorrow. I humbly ask for your trust and your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Will you and the audience please join me in saying thank you to these candidates? And we will now say thank you very much for being here this evening and welcome the candidates from Ward Three. Pasadena?
Pasadena.
Pasadena. Thank you very much. Okay. I am, this is the first time that I've operated a phone like this. I don't think you may have been wishing you could answer some of the questions that get asked to be this true. So I'm going to give some new ones, but some of the ones from before too because they were very difficult. Okay. Thank you. You'll be doing the opening. We are now timed for the two-minute opening presentations for this group and Mr. Del Regno will start with his two-minute presentation.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Dave Del Regno. I'm running for Ward Three City Council. Thank you all for coming out. Appreciate your interest in city politics, which is kind of not everybody's interest, right? So my name, my wife and I moved to the city of Westlake almost 20 years ago, 20 years in March. We were newly married, we ended up having three children, raising our three children here. I was heavily involved with St. Rayfield's Parish in Bay Village, very close to the house. We're down on Dover, closer to the railroad tracks and we were loving Westlake, taking a lot of the things for granted when we first moved in. Shortly thereafter, we experienced some flooding. At that point, I started going around and just working with then-city engineer Bob Kelly due to the flooding in our neighborhood, reaching out to neighbors that Kelly, due to the flooding in our neighborhood, reaching out to neighbors that needed help. One, cleaning out their basements. Two, finding out what they had going on. I turned into kind of a voice for my neighborhood, working with Mr. Kelly. Service Department was phenomenal in that assistance, as you'd expect from the city of Westlake. We had, we had, I started attending council meetings at that point. Here and there, raising three small children, coaching sports, staying, keeping a full-time job as in the construction world. I attended as much as I could. We fast forward to where we're at today, and I'm looking at it now saying, I've got a little bit more time. I want to be involved. I want to not take those infrastructure and the city services for granted anymore. I want a voice in that. So I really appreciate you all coming out tonight, and look forward to all the questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pasadena?
Hi. My name is Michael A. Passanen Jr. I've been a Westlake resident for almost 10 years. It's been exciting to hear everybody kind of come up here and talk about the same specific things about Westlake, right? Raising a family, growing a family, being a part of the community. I'll definitely echo all that while the stress of seeing 30 seconds and 15 seconds pops in front of me as I speak. But, you know, my wife and I had the privilege to continually be raising four kids here in Westlake. All of them go to Westlake Public Schools. They're all involved with rec sports. And myself, I'm the Vice President of Westlake Youth Football. I've got at least one coach in the crowd looking at me, which is nice. He knows how much fun it is to lead 175 kids and roughly 75 coaches from July to October. So it's a real treat. But I went to my first city council meeting about two years ago when they were talking about fields. And that's really what kind of invigorated me to run. I kind of saw everybody on council and didn't think there was a great representation for people like me on that specific board. And I wanted to throw my hat in the ring and add another layer of work to my life, you know, that would take up all of my time. So I'm also the Chief Operating Officer for a local real estate brokerage. I'm in charge of about 25 agents on a day-to-day basis. And if I can lead them and an entire squad of football kids, I think I'd be a pretty great selection for city council in the city of Westlake. I don't think I'd be there today doing the things that I'm doing if I wasn't successful in that. So I appreciate all your time and looking forward to the questions.
Thank you very much. Question has come in from the audience, and Mr. Pasadena, you'll be first, and then Mr. Del Regno. Safety is a big concern in Ward Three. What is your plan for addressing the electric bikes and traffic?
That's an interesting question. Yes, I know that we have a tax vote for November for police and fire, which I hope we vote yes for, so we continue to support our police and fire in the city of Westlake. Electric bikes specifically, I don't think I've seen too many of them in our neighborhood. I live in the Musical Streets neighborhood in Westlake and have for the last 10 years. I think if people abide by the law, wear their helmets and do what they need to do on the roads, that's legal. I think that's exactly what they should be able to do. I think outside of that, if there's extra laws, we'd certainly take a look at it and see what we could do.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Del Regno?
Yeah, thank you. So I know, you know, if you follow it, the electric bikes have become more common in numerous areas. If you start looking around, neighboring cities are starting to put things together for it, and I think that's where council needs to really start. Let's not make a snap decision, overburden a 15-year-old, 14-year-old on a bike and put restrictions on them. But I think we do need to start looking at what other cities are doing. And before we try and put something out there only to take it back, you know, we could follow others' leads and also work with our fellow cities to come up with a solution for the issue at hand, right? It's definitely, safety is the number one for that, and I think we need to keep that in mind while we're navigating these waters.
Thank you very much. Mr. Del Regno, what's the most important issues that, I assume you've been going door-to-door and meeting people, what are the important issues that the constituents in your ward are talking about?
So the top three, I'll say, would be development, so sitting on the, overdevelopment, I should say. I'm on the Planning Commission currently for the city of Westlake, been on that for about two years. So I've got a firsthand look at what's going on in the city and how we can assist with that. The overdevelopment, along with the infrastructure, right? As I said before, I experienced the flooding myself. I think we've started a good path for infrastructure, but we're only as good as the neighboring cities around us, making sure that we stay on top of, with them. EPA's recently come out and mandated improvements for INI, which is huge. We're also going to see a increase in our sewers, which is, at the end of the day, is going to be less than what the other cities, Bay Village, for example, is paying, because of the previous administration and what they've done to improve our INI issues.
Thank you. Mr. Passanen?
Yeah, thank you. I think we've kind of all had the same type of discussion around development, traffic, and infrastructure. And I think that is always an issue when you're talking about a continually growing city, right? So every year, we add a little bit more to Cracker Park. Every year, we decide that we're going to, you know, redo our golf course. So we've got a ton of stuff going on in the city that we're always continually developing. And I think a lot of those things need a ton of infrastructure work to make it happen, right? We've seen all sorts of things about power lately and water and what that looks like in communities. And as a city, we need to continue to make sure that when we build, we build that infrastructure correctly so that we can have those people move in and continue to be a tax base for both commercial and residential in our town.
Thank you. This question has come in from the audience. What are your thoughts on property tax changes at the state level and the possible impact on Westlake? Starting with Mr. Passanen?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, as a father of four children that are in the public school system, I would say that I'm not entirely excited about the property tax change. I do know that the state of California has done things to put caps on people's property tax, which is not a terrible discussion to have here in the state of Ohio. But I know that when the state government was discussing what they would do with property taxes, they left Cuyahoga County kind of to its own devices. So it'll be an interesting trail to navigate, I think, in the future, because there has been a ton of talk about what goes on with these property taxes. I think the only way that you can support a town, a city, a school, a rec department, police, fire, you've got to do with taxes, right? So we've got to figure out ways to continually support that.
Thank you. Mr. Del Regno?
Yeah, similarly, I agree with Mr. Passanen. We do need to look at it. 25% of the services that are offered in the city of Westlake are coming from property taxes at this point. So taking all of that away in one fell swoop is probably not the right approach. Put a cap or controlling that a little bit differently is a much better approach. At the city council level, I think, you know, we're going to have to fight for our constituents as far as how we handle that, making sure that we do have, we do have a good handle around it and how we're going to approach it moving forward. I don't feel that we need to immediately just cut out all property taxes, is the best option for anyone in the state.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Del Regno, what is your stance regarding the use of herbicides in city parks?
So the herbicides in city parks was an interesting question. It was not, it was a curveball, I'll say. Did not expect that one to come up. But I, I think that our services department, our lands, all of our infrastructure, our services that we offer here, need to take a look at what's best for the community at the end of the day. Are we doing what's proper, what's best in the reduction in all the turf fields that we're putting in? We'll definitely cut down on the herbicide use in the city parks, which is, which is a plus. So I think, you know, we need to find out what, is there alternative methods? And I really turn that over to departments, individuals that are the experienced to answer that question for us.
Thank you. Mr. Passanen?
Yeah, I'd probably echo a lot of what Mr. Levesque said earlier, too, about not having yards. As a father of four young children, I'd rather not have to mow and rake and keep it pretty and proper all the time. But unfortunately, when we give out awards to homes in the city of Westlake for having fantastic yards, you kind of get guilted into making them look real nice. But I think, you know, as Mr. Del Regno said, I think, you know, as a community, we need to take a look at, at what we're using and how that affects people. Obviously, there have been a multitude of lawsuits over the last 20 years when it comes to herbicides and what those do to, to human beings and livestock and any number of things and people, right? So I think at any point, it's a good idea to take a look at your process and procedures and make sure that those things are, are right for everybody in the community.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Passanen, what do you think is the number one infrastructure issue facing Westlake?
I don't know if there's a number one issue, but I think it's a, you know, accumulation of things, right? I think we touched on it a little bit earlier, right, with, with how we're developing the town, whether that be with, with commercial buildings, whether that be with multifamily, whether that be with residential. You know, we just added a ton of townhomes on Detroit Road just recently, in the old wine fields. They've named them after, you know, Merlot and any other number of wines. So we're adding a whole nother level of traffic to Detroit Road that probably can't handle it. But again, as a developing, growing community, we have to figure out how we bring people and businesses to the town to continue to have the nice things that we have, like the Parks and Rec Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the school system. You know, there are a ton of cities around us that are having kind of the same issues. And I feel like our city has done a pretty good job of listening to, to its constituents, but we have to figure out what we're going to do moving forward in the future to keep growing.
Thank you. Mr. Del Regno?
So number one, I think, is the infrastructure. You know, how are we handling all of this growth? And it goes from streets to water to sanitary to storm sewer systems. I think we're, interesting, sitting on the Planning Commission, I think we have a lot of wonderful individuals working on these at the city right now. Director Bedell in the Planning Department, Mr. Graham over in the Building Department, all really stay on top of this. It's, it's fascinating, if you come to a Planning Commission meeting, they do go late sometimes, but they are fascinating to see how everybody comes together, reviews thoroughly, you know, really thought out before they just a knee-jerk reaction. It's, it's probably going to be, for me though, is going to be our storm and sanitary would be my number one.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Del Regno, our city's in the midst of spending more than 15 million on creation and improvement of sports facilities. Are you familiar with these projects? And what are your thoughts about the need for these facilities and the cost?
Yeah, so obviously, very familiar on the Planning Commission. We see all of them come through our, our desk at, in different stages and different formats. So very familiar with them. I find that, again, where is the gain it's going to be for our community? Can we play baseball, as Mr. Levesque likes to see? Can we play it more frequently on these fields? Absolutely, right? We're, less rainouts, less things like that. The use is there. Demand is there. The citizens voted for it. So the demand is there. And I think that it's a wonderful thing for the city. It creates a wonderful opportunity for the businesses around all of these, these areas. I think it's just, I'm impressed with it. I think it's going to turn it into, make Westlake even, you know, it is the best city on the west side. I think it's going to take it to that next level to be untouchable at that point.
Thank you. Mr. Passanen?
Yeah, as I kind of stated before, obviously, I'm well entrenched in the youth sports world when it comes to the city of Westlake. I'm a baseball coach, a soccer coach, a football coach, and a wrestling coach. So I am doing way too many things at any given moment. You know, as a, as a father of young children, when I decided to move, when my wife and I decided that we wanted to move, we wanted to move to a city that supported its schools, supported its rec department, and had, had things for our children to do. I think it's great that we're spending money on it. Mr. Del Regno said it earlier, right? We voted on it years ago. So I think we should have those decisions about building that type of infrastructure for our community, right? The only way we get more families and children in this town is by building things for those type of people, right? That's why we have a senior center, that's why we have a rec department, and that's why we continue to grow our fields.
Thank you. Mr. Passanen, if you could change one thing about the zoning code, what would it be? And why?
That seems like a loaded question to ask a real estate agent. But there, I think there's, I think there's a lot of things, you know, when it comes to, to the code. But I do think the city of Westlake does a really good job of splitting its commercial business away from residential, and then also having some parts of the town combined together in mixed use. I think there, you know, I think the city did a good job years ago, kind of splitting up commercial in certain spots all over the town and putting retail together. I think there's some spots in the city, obviously, that, that could use some help and could use a little bit of brightening. I don't think there's too many of them in Ward Three. But I think kind of as a city as a whole, as a council member, right, it's not just about my ward, it's also about helping the city kind of grow and do all those things. So when it comes to zoning, I think we have to have a serious discussion about implicating more mixed use, more multifamily, and bringing more people into the town.
Thank you. Mr. Del Regno, what are your thoughts about the zoning code, code? And what would you like to change?
So on Planning Commission, we actually take these codes and review them. We're in the process of reviewing several. We've, we've kind of looked at curvilinear streets and what the setbacks are for side yards and, and the likes. And those have all been adjusted. And what we're also seeing, when we do make these code changes, there is non-conforming, as they call it, or grandfathered in, that also takes precedence, right? So we have an existing city that when we make a code change, it does affect other areas or people that are currently living here. So they, they are being reviewed, they are being looked at. Board of Zoning and Appeals, we're seeing a lot of locations of generators and how they are, how, you know, what the, what the code says now. So we kind of look at it and say, what are we seeing a lot of on the zoning and appeals area? And should we be reviewing them? And which we do. And we go back, we review them, we make some changes, we present it to council and see if they go through. So I think that's the, you know, I think it's, we're have, we have a good handle on it right now.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Del Regno, how would you balance the interests of your ward with the broader needs of the community? There was a map, it's at the table in the back, that if you haven't gotten it, you might want to look at it, because Westlake is a big geography. And you have fairly big wards, too. So how do you balance your ward and all of Westlake?
So, yeah, thank you. Ward Three is interesting in that it has residential, it has a large commercial industrial area, it's got some of, some retail in it. So balancing, we're the perfect ward for it at that point, right? So we're, what we kind of, where we go with it and how we handle our ward is going to spread throughout the, the city of Westlake. I think that, you know, there's always an interest for your ward, but as Mr. Passanen said, we, we need to be really looking at it from a citywide approach. Current council, current administration, all take that approach, and I want to continue to take that approach. It's not the, it's, we're all good together, right? It's not one against the other. So I think that's my approach to it.
Thank you. Mr. Passanen?
Yeah, I mean, I touched on it obviously a little bit beforehand. I think, you know, obviously, I want to represent my neighborhood. I was the former council president for the Musical Streets neighborhood. And, you know, I, I was on that board before I had twins, and they took up all my time. But, you know, I think, as a whole, right, like, I think you have to take a look at what is in the best interest of the community at large. Obviously, I would love to, to grow, you know, residentially and commercially in Ward Three. But if those opportunities don't arise, right, we've got to figure out spots where we can do that in other parts of the city. So we need to make sure that, you know, we're looking at the best interest of the city as a whole, because that's what we are, right? We're a community. And the only way that we build as a community is by kind of, you know, pulling on the same side of the rope, right? So I think, you know, we do have a diverse ward in Ward Three, and I'd like to see that continue throughout the whole city of Westlake.
Thank you. And the last question, starting with Mr. Passanen, how do you think our community is How do you think our community is meeting the needs of seniors? Is there more to be done?
Yeah, I mean, I think just in our ward alone, we have a senior care facility. I know there's a couple of them, kind of all sprinkled throughout the city of Westlake, which is great. I think those people, just like everybody else, need a place to live. And what better place to live in a senior care facility than Westlake, Ohio? I see those buses out and about all the time, dropping them off at Drug Mart and Cracker Park and doing their shopping and going to Mark's. And seeing that is great, right? Because they're a part of the community just like everybody else. I think this, you know, the Senior Center next to the Rec Center is fantastic. When I do my midday walks when it's nice outside, I get to see all these people having class together and hanging out and acting as a community, right? I think those things are great for, for our seniors to have a spot in the city of Westlake to meet and to have classes and to grow and to be able to walk around the Rec Center and see how beautiful the rest of the Parks and Rec Department is.
Thank you. Mr. Del Regno?
So, yeah, so walking in the neighborhoods as we've all done, right? We're starting to, I'm talking with individuals, and there's quite a few neighbors in my, in our ward that are looking, that drive for the senior center. It is amazing to me, the use that those vehicles get and how busy they are. So, that's a, that's a great thing. Talking with drivers for the city of Bay Village, they're not as busy as we are. Not that they don't have the seniors, they just don't have the resources to assist them with it. So, I think that, you know, how we handle the, how we help the seniors in our neighborhood, it's not only at the governmental level, I think it's at the neighboring level, right? Plenty of neighbors in our, in our, my neighborhood are seniors. And it's getting out there and helping them in the streets and helping them with their lawns and things like that. I think, you know, devoting the time to serve others is a huge thing, and I think that's where we need to really take that approach.
Thank you. Now, starting with Mr. Passanen, we are going to have our two-minute closing statements. Thank you very much. You can begin anytime.
Thank you. So, Westlake has always been a place where families come to build a future, and my family is no different. My wife is a dedicated math educator in Medina, and we're raising our four children here. We made that decision roughly 10 years ago and cannot imagine living anywhere else. They attend our schools, play in our sports teams, and participate in the very same city programs and make Westlake such a special place to live. Over the years, I've had the privilege as a community leader in youth sports, coaching soccer, baseball, wrestling, and football, and currently serving as the Vice President of Westlake Youth Football. Through that work, I've seen firsthand how strong schools, safe neighborhoods, and well-supported public services make a direct impact on our families and our future. Professionally, as a small business owner and Chief Operating Officer of a local commercial real estate brokerage, I understand the challenges and opportunities that come with growth and sustained success. As a council member, I will work to keep Westlake attractive to both residents and businesses, making sure we maintain a thriving economy while protecting the character of our neighborhoods and cities. I believe in responsible development, supporting our schools, and ensuring our public services, like police, fire, and rec, have the resources they need to keep our community safe and strong. My goal is simple, to make thoughtful decisions that preserve what we love about Westlake while building a foundation for the future. I'm running because I care deeply about this city and the people who call it home. Together, we can make Westlake an even better place to live, work, shop, play, and grow as a community. On Election Day, I humbly ask for your vote to represent Ward Three. Let's continue to move Westlake forward together. And if you see me run out of here very quickly, I have to chaperone Camp Newhop for my son. So, I'm a little late. Thank you.
Mr. Del Regno?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming. I think you, as you, we've, you know, we've both spoken here that we're, we're obviously both passionate about the city of Westlake and similar to you that took the time out of your evenings to come up here and ask questions and get to know us. You're as devoted as we are. I, you know, like Mike, I've been coaching sports for way too long in sports that I don't necessarily have all the knowledge about, but I still give it a shot, right? Fortunately for me, my children are getting well past my coaching abilities. So, I, it's when I kind of got involved more in the city. So, coming out, starting with the Planning Commission, the zoning and appeals, the CIC that I was on, really getting to know how the interactions of council work with mayors and directors and all of that, has really shined some light on it and built a little bit more fire in it. I do believe in giving back, right? As the Vice President of the St. Vincent de Paul Society for the city of St., for the parish of St. Rayfields, I see the needs and want to help at that point. I have a, my construction background assists us on the Planning Department, Planning Commission. We have a couple of architects, a couple of engineers, but we don't have anybody that gets their hands dirty like I do. So, I bring another look and feel to all of that. I do want to say that, you know, I want to ensure that the, the city is, continues to be fiscally responsible with our tax dollars. That's the biggest thing. Sitting through a lot, I sat through two, two financial meetings in the last two years. They're interesting, they're long. I want to continue to be conscientiously planning and development, future developments. And of course, I want to keep the infrastructure a priority for our residents. So, I just ask that, you know, hopefully, I can get a vote from everybody come Election Day, and appreciate everybody's attendance this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you to both of these candidates. Please join me in thanking them for their answers. We've now concluded Ward Three. On our agenda tonight was to be Ward One and two candidates talking, similarly to what we've had from Ward Four and Ward Three. I think that only one of those candidates is in the room. The process of the League of Women Voters is that we moderate forums of opposing candidates so that people can tell the differences of candidates that are vying for their vote. If there's only one person, we use a slightly different process, and I'm going to let it be explained by Nadia.
I do want to apologize to the audience, who are probably looking forward to having that forum. But unfortunately, the, one of the candidates for Ward One, and I apologize if I'm saying his name wrong, but I could not ask him the pronunciation, Monti Hamowee, is a Rocky River Police Officer. In our communications with him, he indicated that he would be working tonight, but that he would be able to make it. And that's the last communication we had from him. So, unfortunately, we're not, as Pam said, able to have that forum tonight. But the other candidate, Dwayne Van Dyke, is here, and I believe some of the other candidates stayed behind as well. So, we would encourage those of you that are here to go and speak to them one-on-one. There may be questions that we didn't get to for those races that you want to talk one-on-one with them about. And just before we do that, I just want to thank Pam for moderating the forums that we had tonight. I think she did a great job, so if we could give her a round of applause. I also want to thank all of our volunteers who worked to make this, these forums possible, as well, as I said, the library for allowing us to use this wonderful space. I think Andrew's in the back there, and I want to thank him personally for all that the library does to help us with these forums. And then, of course, our great videographers in the back, Lewis and Wyndham, who have made it possible for us to share these forums with a wider audience afterwards. So, as I said, our forums were recorded. They will be put onto our YouTube channel, which is LWV Greater Cleveland, and also on our social media. As I said, you're free to share the entirety of those videos, but our policies prohibit the sharing of portions of those videos because those are, belong to the League. I also would like to note that we will be having another forum for Westlake School Board on Monday, next Monday, October 6, at 7:00 PM. And it will be at Dover Congregational Church, just down the street on Dover Center. And that forum will also be available livestream and recorded afterwards. Thank you all for coming, and I hope that you all vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Perhaps we should have Mr. Van Dyke raise his hand so that, so that people know. And we want to give you time to meet and greet all the people here that would be working with you.
And what I'd like to say is, is to the League Women Voters, thank you very much for hosting this event. I think it's very important to give everybody an opportunity to explain what they're running for and why. And so, thank you for all of your volunteerism that you do for us in the community.
Very well. Yes, thank you.